Anyone want to do the invocation? Anyone so inclined to do that sort of thing? I'm like, Bailey Wood.
How about Mrs. Diggs? Vivian looks a hell of a lot more spiritual than we do.
Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and we thank you for your grace. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again to do the county's business. We ask for your guidance and direction. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
So, uh, stand up for the pledge, please. Remember, I take out a lot of commas, so we're gonna go through this in a more orderly fashion. I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, I think that, that was great. Um, first I have to do, did we normally approve the minutes?
I do, I got them.
Agenda rather, or the minutes, I don't know.
We approved both of them. Agenda usually first and then minutes second.
Any comments on the agendas proposed?
Move, let it be approved as right.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
As second by Mrs. Diggs, all those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Moving on to the minutes. Minutes of the last meeting, I, we're up to date on minutes, Stuart, is that correct? Okay, there we go.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Any comments on the minutes?
Those that they be adopted as right.
Patrick, move.
Second.
Heidi, seconds. Any discussion on the minutes?
None.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Mr. Parker, over to you. We're, we're through the beginning.
We, we do need to do a roll call, roll call now.
Oh.
Chris Crowley.
Here.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Ed King. John Cost.
Here.
Roger McKinley. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins Corey.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
We have a quarrel.
All yours.
All mine, okay, thank you, I apologize. Heavy traffic in Northumberland. Okay. And we're at.
Where we have approved of the minutes.
Commissioner's comments.
Commissioner's comments. Is there anyone on the commission that have a comment at this time? It's been a very long June already, with all the budget hearings and everything. So is there anyone that have a comment at this time from the commission? That you'd like to share with us? Okay. Anyone? Anyone?
No comment.
Anyone? About a month ago, I read an article in the Rap-Hank Record or the Echo, whichever, that stated that the fastest growing county in the northern neck was Northumberland. Did any of you see that article?
In terms, in terms of population.
In terms of population, did any of you see that article?
Yeah.
What did you think of that audit? That's just.
I mean, we lost population between the last two censuses, but I think after the COVID, a lot of people with means and broadband moved here full-time. But, you know, I can see from the number of people in our one grocery store and the amount of traffic at the solid waste facility, that there seem to be more people here in the off-season as there were before.
Or they're just eating warm.
Possibly. Uh, or it could be all the Airbnb people filling up the, stocking up the fridge.
There's no question it's, uh, there's more cars on the road.
No question about it. And as a, as a planning commission, it, um, it seemed that the statistics shouldn't be lying to us, that there are more people in Northumberland County. There is more traffic. And as a planning commission, um, where do we go from here? Obviously, there are more people, how to be planned for those people? Is our infrastructure prepared to handle the load that we're talking about? I know in Reedville, um, uh, the infrastructure is old, am I right, Mr. Diggs? The infrastructure is old and, um, could possibly give away in any minute. And it has, in a few times. And we don't wanna pollute our waters because if you pollute that channel in Reedville, they're gonna shut down everything. So my question is, with our infrastructure, how are we preparing for the future? Calio, Reedville, that's sucking money out of the middle of the county. One grocery store. So my question is, how do you prepare for the future of Northumberland when we are really in, we're a desert. We're pretty much a food desert as we are. And, um, and if something should ever happen to food line, um, we become a suburb of Kilmarnock. And, um, and that's kinda disturbing.
Well, I think with our part-time residents, if everybody that was part-time came here, I think the county would have a hard time, um, keeping up with the solid waste of everybody, not to mention the liquid waste that goes into the soil from everybody. Because, you know, most of these houses on the water, well, it's, before COVID, I would say about forty to sixty percent were, were part-time. And after COVID, I'm not sure what the, what the percentage would be.
It'll be interesting to see what the next tax and revenue reports are. I don't know how many of, and there has been clearly, obviously, a, an influx of new people. Do they actually live here? Do they live in Richmond or DC or Williamsburg? You know, there's really no way to tell except through the tax revenue numbers. I, I read the same article you did, Garfield, and they were, you know, it was a, a one-year snapshot. And I was sort of surprised by the numbers. But I don't know what they're based on. And while I sort of hope they're right, because I think we could certainly absorb more people and that would be obviously a benefit to the tax base. I really, I think I kinda wanna wait and see, but to your point, our infrastructure is pretty deficient and, you know, I don't know what we can do about it. The major agency involved in that is VADA. And to some extent, the voice of the county on this subject is the Board of Supervisors. Now, what can we do? Point out to the Board of Supervisors that this is getting to be a problem? They all drive here, they know it's a problem. What can we do about it? Who the hell knows?
Well, we've already done something. Um, and so the subcommittee that worked on the, uh, the capital budgeting process, we not just took the request that came in from sanitation, schools and so on, EMS and so forth, Sheriff, we also asked them, what's missing? What are we not doing yet to take a more progressive five-year view of it? And for example, sanitation came in and said, yeah, we've got a problem in Reedville. We fixed the problem on an emergency basis, we have another one coming, but there's other things that we can be doing to sort of stave off the inevitable. And so there is some stuff. I think we did, I think that we did a great job and the commission approved all that, and I think the board approved it as well. So I think that we've already done something. Your point is still to uptake. But I think in terms of the empirical data about whether in fact the county's growing in population, there's actually a way to find out. And that is, has there been new home construction? In which case the capacity of housing has grown? And/or do we have, uh, what's the inventory of available homes for sale? Is that higher or lower than normal? So if it's not, if, if there's no increase in those two things, that clearly tells us the rest is transit. There, these are people who are temporary visitors to the county, undoubtedly a very large portion of it, because I don't know that we have much house construction going on. And, and we, my wife occasionally looks at Zillow to see what the availability is around here. It's not particularly, it's never been great since COVID and it's not got much more. So I suspect that the, the data is probably around a lot of the, uh, the, the, the visitors who are, who are renting. I live on Hall Creek and I know we have a lot more people playing on the water than we've ever had before, damn it.
And, and my next point, um, to, um, to that is, uh, we're going to have a tax increase.
Substantial.
The citizens are going to have a tax increase. And my question is, how much can we take without giving? What are we giving them for their buck? I know the peace and quiet and all that good stuff that goes along with it, but what about the economics of it? What do they get, what are our citizens getting in Kilmarnock? Well, we know what they're getting in Kilmarnock as opposed to what they're getting here, but the question comes, what are we, how are we gonna constructively fix that? We are gonna look around and, and see these things happening to us. Think for example, even Heathfield, for example. Am I correct, there are no incorporated towns in Northumberland?
That's not correct.
That's not correct?
Northern Kilmarnock isn't an incorporated town, it's just not incorporated in North umberland County. But it is an incorporated town. So we have a couple of blocks of houses that are, have to pay Northumberland County taxes and down in Kilmarnock, so.
Well, that's.
There is no North, Northumberland Incorporated Town is, is correct.
Okay. And my point to that is that, um, how much growth can you expect when you're not incorporated? And you can't capture certain data, like, like for example, our candidacy, Heathfield. Uh, I know the Board of Supervisors, they buy old buildings and renovate them and then use them against. My question comes though is, what is that doing for the future? As a planning commission, what are we seeing down the road? Are, are, are we just reacting to things? And if you think we are reacting now, you wait until November, uh, when taxes are due in November. And, and folks look around and they're gonna say, you know, my taxes are up and I'm still doing the same thing. I don't see any more conveniences. So I, I, I was just, I'm more than thinking out loud, thinking, you know, there's a problem and somebody has to recognize that there's a problem. We are at best trying to keep up main gaining. You, uh, you see what, did I explain that correct?
I, I think what we saw though with the Board of Supervisors, it's the vast majority of money, of new money that's being spent is going to the schools. So the question is, is it worth it? Are we getting a good value there? There isn't a lot of money going into the county government. We're certainly not investing in buying land for recreational purposes as a county at this point. So the answer at this point is, you're, you're, the money's going to school, special ed benefits, teachers and salaries and so forth. Do they find that value?
But that's life.
I mean. Well, I think we need to distinguish between the many state and federal mandates that are opposed to our schools, their district, but they simply have no control over. And then the amount within the school budget and the, um, apparent, uh, budget misstatements that have been going on for years. But we do have some control.
And, and I guess, and I'm gonna leave it after this. I'm gonna leave it after this. It's just that, as a planning commission, and we see the problems that we have now, how is anything going to change in the next five years? I mean, if you don't have kids, us older folks are gonna be in trouble. We're not even gonna be able to walk until we, you know, we just do not have that. And, and the answer is, um, I believe rather than be reactive, we have to be proactive. You gotta attack the problem. I mean, I look at, um, uh, I know, I threw the word of incorporation just for the fun of it, just to see what people are gonna say, but we are, we're, we're not. You, you, small-town thinking. How long, I know fishing has been very important for hundreds of years. I know that lugging has been important for hundreds of years and I know that farming, you think it's not going away, but obviously we live in a food desert. So what, what is, why can't we attract? And the reason why is because, are we attractive? You date a beautiful person, it's because they are attractive. You see what I'm saying? And, uh, and, uh, you know, it, it's just something that I had been pondering, especially after those statistics came out, because those statistics are gonna come back to bite us, because the state is gonna use those statistics to say, well, you don't need any money. You've got plenty of money. You're rich in Northumberland County.
Already on the wrong side of the school funding.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely. Okay, Stuart, sorry, we can go on now.
Just to respond to, to your wrap-up there, um, I had a chance finally to read, catch up on the latest chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and I think some of the things that are in there, now I know some of that's old stuff too, but we talked about doing these things or these things should be done, but they haven't been. Whose fault is that? Does anybody care? You know, we need a reservoir in Calio. Uh, we need to do various things with our infrastructure, but we haven't. And there hasn't been any burning need to do so for some reason. So I think that the planning commission, oh, well before my time, was very foresighted at a number of things that are included in the Comprehensive Plan that has simply have never been followed through on. So I think as we continue to review it, I apologize for missing the last two meetings, but think through, of all of the things that are in there that continue to be here and there that we, we may want to add, what's the action item?
I mean, to that point and, and to Chairman Parker's comments, um, Chapter Three was initially written in the nineteen seventies and really hasn't been rewritten since. It's been somewhat modified. But the reality of the early seventies was that we were not aware of being in competition with places like Kilmarnock and Warsaw, Tapahannock for businesses and jobs. So another way it would give us to risk, same point you guys were making, is how do we make Northumberland County more attractive? Because we currently have a planning document that essentially repeatedly says, preserve the rural image of the county. And that may not be realistic. It was certainly not conducive to attracting new businesses to this area that could just as easily go to Kilmarnock or Warsaw or Tapahannock. And we are in a competitive market for business development and I think we need to accept that and use it to our advantage.
Well, you know, I went to, uh, because I'm pretty nosy, I went to a Kilmarnock meeting. Very, very progressive attitude of moving forward. And, um, and it reflects it in the community. It, it just reflects it. So that, that's all I'm saying. Stuart, I'm sorry, let's go on.
No, that's our.
Just one thing, I, we're talking in general, I think if we wanna get anything done, you need to be specific. What is it we need? And then go after it or find out who should be doing it? Should the public be doing it? Or should the county be in helpful through whatever means necessary to attract them? Target those things that we need and, and go for them. And then I think things will follow, we, once you start that. But, uh, grocery store, yeah, I've just got one grocery store here, a big one. And, uh, gas stations, we're short on them. You could use more restaurants. I don't know, I, we, we talk about this, but we go home and that's it, then we talk about it again.
Well, I mean, I would think some of this falls on the Economic Development Commission. Uh, the other thing I just wanna add is that Mr. Brian, uh, was comparing a county to towns. Towns under the general simply have a lot of, um, revenue generating capabilities that counties do not. They have the.
Well, actually, I wasn't, Stuart, if you were listening.
Well, you said Warsaw, Tapahannock, Kilmarnock.
We are in competition.
You said Warsaw, Tapahannock, Kilmarnock.
Okay, we are in competition, if I may finish. On for business location here, anywhere here, Calio, Heathfield, Reedville, you name it, with Warsaw, Tapahannock, Kilmarnock, or if you prefer Lancaster, Essex and Richmond Counties. And the fundraising ability is utterly and completely irrelevant to that subject.
Oh, it is?
Right. So what we need to do is make Northumberland County as attractive or more attractive to new businesses than the surrounding counties, who we are competing with. But you just, you, you deny that?
No, I think you need money to get things done.
Yeah.
And how do you generate that money without raising taxes? That, that's a conundrum here.
With respect to what Mr. Parker just said, with respect to the forward-thinking of Lancaster County, part of that is attributable to the fact that they've recognized that their taxes are going through the roof. Their increase this year is going to be much, much larger than Northumberland. Part of what is attractive about Northumberland relative to Lancaster is the fact that we have a lower tax burden. Now, how much we can play that card, I don't know. We have a relative lack of, um, administrative expenses and overhead compared to other counties. We also have a lack of sewage systems relative to other counties. We've gotta address that as well. You did that partially, John, through your suggestions with respect to the funding of the sanitation department. And we don't do that just to throw money away, it's because we need it.
But ninety percent of the county doesn't benefit from those, right?
They benefit from the jobs and the economic development that sewage systems provide.
Yeah, and the problem is that Reedville is built out and there's really not a lot of room to expand in Reedville.
And do you think that businesses like Omega Protein would be, would continue to remain in Reedville if there was no sewage system?
They were there long before the sewage system.
Yeah, they were much, much smaller.
And a lot of the, I mean, a lot of the homes were that.
And there were, what, a dozen, uh, commercial fishing operations in Reedville?
Yeah, there were. I don't know how many.
Something like that. There was only one left. And the economic impact of that business throughout, say, a fifty-mile radius is absolutely enormous.
But having a so, a sanitary system in Reedville has not increased the number of residences or the number of properties. It, I mean, there hasn't been a lot of new building or subdivisions or anything added because we have the sanitation system.
Heidi, I'm limiting this strictly to business and commercial facilities.
Okay.
I didn't mean to include residential.
But we haven't had any business increases or changes in Reedville.
Crazy crap, has it grown?
I'm, I'm not, I'll add another one.
That's an eternal, that's an eternal problem. Restaurants as a group have not grown.
Correct.
A lot of that has to do with, uh, the effect of COVID and the overall economic decline. With the heightened traffic, I would imagine those restaurant businesses are gonna be doing better.
I term that as exposure. What COVID did was expose us to where we lack and we either going to accept that and then try to improve it. A lot of these municipalities and small areas, they go after grant money hard. When I look at a Warsaw, when I look at, and I know I've said it since the nineteen nineties, you do not have an industrial park because people don't want it, but they don't understand. You've gotten to have an industrial park to advance. And we have all this, county picks up pieces of land, there's gotta be a major investment. And I would say it had to be ten to twenty million dollars of an investment, because you waited thirty years before you even, would even hear the idea of an industrial park. Then you can offer businesses an opportunity to go. How many do you not, are not going to go to Starbucks in Kilmarnock? You're not going to go.
I don't think so.
I like front porch.
Out of necessity. No, that's, that's what I'm saying, um.
But you know, getting back to Chapter Three, which we're gonna discuss tonight, there, it's loaded with references to industrial parks. And I don't think we have one, do we?
No, we don't.
No. So I don't know where that comes from. Uh, there are repeated, repeated references to maintaining the rural character of the county. And then a litany of obstacles to economic development. And if I were a new business thinking about locating in the, in the northern neck area, that would turn me off immediately and, you know. Knowing that, you know, Warsaw and Tapahannock and Kilmarnock areas are just as likely as not to give you a grant for moving your business there.
They pay Domino's, what, twenty thousand dollars?
That's right. Yeah, that's right. You gotta get them in the door.
Desperately needs is more pizza.
Yeah. But in, 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 in seeing all of that, because the economic development folks are looking at that, the first thing is, you gotta not have a defeatist attitude. We can't, we're Northumberland County, we, we just can't do it. And, and from what I understand, I know a little bit about business, you would never start a business with that attitude. Am I right?
Okay.
You just wouldn't. And, and I know there are a lot of retired folk in, in Northumberland County and I know they moved here because it's retired, but I also know this, they need services, which is one of the reasons, and, and sometimes the only way to get Northumberland to do something is to, is to, it has to be an emergency. The EMS system that we have, that's how we got that. You know, it, it has to be an emergency before you can move forward. And I think that we can't afford to always operate with this kind of stress. People just, I mean, you know, your taxes are gonna go up, uh, you know, stuff like that, so.
That actually can dovetail into our first agenda item here, which is talking about the pros and cons of business license, because the statistical data around where do people work here? You start, you've got county, public sector, Omega clearly, but the next big one on the list is home maintenance and construction. And the problem is, is that most of them, no, I shouldn't say most, we don't know that. A huge portion of that group of people are all in the underground economy, the cash economy.
Yep.
Now, does putting business licenses in place solve that or make it worse? We're finishing up a deck on our houses, dude. Massively complex. Most of the work I have done around my house by people who are not licensed businesses, because licensed businesses don't show up. But the Mexican guy I have does. Every day I ask him to be there.
At least in theory, it's illegal to engage in home improvement, home construction without a, there are three levels of certification for contractors. And if you don't have one of them, uh, you are, it's illegal to do it. Now, does that slow anybody down? I don't know.
No.
But it's certainly far more than we could do as a planning commission.
And that's something the Economic Development Commission is looking at, you know, I've been participating in that as well. Part of the issue there, we're discovering, we had, we've had a number of different business people come before the commission as part of the due diligence exercise to understand what's standing in their way of growing or success or their industry growing. And without question, every one of them, except the guy from McDonald's who just laughed us off, he said, when we asked him if it made sense to have McDonald's here, all of them have said, I can't get people to show up to work. Oisterman said that? The, um, trying to remember somebody else?
This was the Business Development Commission?
Economic Development Commission.
Economic.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you're gonna attract industry. So if you're going to attract industry, they better bring their labor with them.
Precisely. Because the labor ain't here. Now, but that's being defeated, so I'm not going to go there. That's, you make a valid point. But Charles, you've had a problem keeping staffing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I have to hire twenty-five percent more people than I need in order to have enough open days.
I talked to Danny over at Horn Harbor, he says the exact same thing all the time. So they're all, you need experience running a business. Their chef was fantastic. They couldn't keep staff. They're gone. So, I mean, we got a workforce issue problem. What it's related to, I don't know. We clearly have demand, as we started looking at the pros and cons of licensing, we clearly have demand for more contractor-type people, tradespeople. But we can't seem to keep them or get them motivated or to be able to grow. What's standing in the way? I don't think business licensing is going to make the problem any better.
With reference to what you said earlier, I don't see people moving into this county and bringing their own workforce with them as necessary, as all-bait. I mean, these people are going to, some of them, I don't know what percentage, it's all guesswork, but some of them are going to move here, buy or rent homes, spend money in the shops, you know. Maybe an infusion of outside talent is a good thing.
It would be. The question is, why would a business want to be here? We have a very sparsely populated county, unlike the other ones we're referencing here. Tappahannock, Warsaw, Kilmarnock, they have a core population density that is able to attract fast food chains, amongst other things.
Which means that their real estate is probably apples-to-apples, more expensive than ours. And they have far more transportation difficulties than we have, even with our bad infrastructure.
But the point I was going to make, Patrick, is that a business that locates, particularly a retail or a service business, knows that their clientele is within a relatively narrow area. Even look at our comprehensive plan. You've got Calio and Burgess or Reedville on one end of the county. And while they're nowhere near the size of those other towns that we're talking about, there's, it's a desert in between. There's nothing here.
Look at Burgess, look at Wycomico Church, look at Eastston. Businesses are sprouting up in these places.
But there's no population density to draw the kinds of crowds that you're seeing in Kilmarnock, Tappahannock, or Warsaw.
It is very old news that in Northumberland County, anybody within a half an hour drive is considered your neighbor. How do shops in Leesville, or Burgess, or Wycomico Church stay alive if people aren't willing to drop? That's part of the nature of things. Now, that only focuses, however, on retail. It doesn't focus on service, and it doesn't really focus on manufacturing and commercial.
Well, I think one of the things we're missing here is geographic isolation. All the towns you mentioned are major arteries to and from the Northern Neck. A concentration of people from the rural hinterlands goes onto the main highway and travels down.
Should we just give up?
I did not say that, but I'm trying to, you all need to understand, we live at the end of a dead-end road. And that, I mean, that's, it's challenging. I don't have any magic answers, but...
Well, I think we can go home with it.
Talking about, I mean, the funnel, traffic funnels into Warsaw, and it funnels into Tappahannock, and it funnels into Kilmarnock, and goes out through Whiteston. So these are natural congregation points that we do not have. Maybe a ferry.
And that didn't happen overnight with those towns.
That's right.
That's been a long time coming. And they, they're smart enough to take advantage of opportunity when it comes along, when the time is right to get more business in and try to put them in place. But you're right, we're at the end of the road. All those are thoroughbears. They have that high density of traffic going through this road right here, not so much.
They also have a geographic convenience with respect to Richmond, Washington, Williamsburg.
More so than us.
More so than us.
One of the points that we've been working on in Economic Development Commission that I brought to their attention is that where most economic development happens, unless you have something that causes somebody to suddenly want to be here, that we don't have that necessarily. So what you need to do is look out for what we call new, near neighbor industries. So what's big here? You laid them up. We've got fishing, agriculture, forestry. So we talked to Oysterman. What about if we processed more of the food here, rather than shipping it off to Baltimore, wherever it goes? And Chip Wilson came in, Chip Williams came in, gave a great description of his work and, you know, the role he plays in brokering food, leaving the county and going elsewhere. Great opportunity for our supply to meet other people's demand. But what about if in the supply chain for those oysters or those crabs or whatever, we did more of it? What about processing of commodities? You know, my driveway's a farm field. That corn, do we process more of it here instead of shipping it elsewhere? So that's a near neighbor industry, or a next-door neighbor industry that you spin off of your existing assets, and we clearly have those three assets. But to try to create something completely foreign to those three things is a non-starter because we're the end of the highway, we're the end of the road here. And so they're looking at that, and that's the way they've been doing this due diligence with the existing businesses based here. How can we help you expand? How can we help you go to market more effectively here, given that Northumberland itself is a small market? What is it we can do to process food to get out? And simple things like, there's a complete lack of refrigerated trucks in this area. We have lots of CDLs, you know, commercial drivers who are driving trucks, but very few of them are refrigerating. Oysters require refrigeration from the moment they leave the dock. That would be a place to start. So things like that, that's the kind of businesses we need to be looking at, not just hoping somebody's going to show up here and start manufacturing Subarus. That ain't going to happen. This is a terrible place to do that.
Okay. To that point, you've also got, we spent probably over a year talking about solar energy. And according to chapter three of the business plan, you basically can't build one here.
You can't.
And that's why I think it's terribly on a date. We need to be, we're never going to compete with Lancaster, Essex, actually was Moreland and Richmond, on existing businesses. I think some of what we need to do is anticipate new businesses, like we did with the solar for this.
One thing we had a good opportunity of, but it fell through, I think, and I wonder how it would have been if it had gone through, was the high-speed ferry that was in place. That was, one individual had money that he was going to put a big investment in, and then he was going to get the states to come on board with Maryland and Virginia. Reedville, Chrisfield, Point Lookout over to St. Mary's County, back to Reedville, that triangle. He was going to bring three boats, have three boats in, and they would do tractor trailers and automobiles. And it would be a lot of commerce going, coming and going through this area, through the whole county. They come to Reedville, they have to come by here too. But that fell through, in my understanding, because primarily this county was in favor of it. And I think Chrisfield was in favor of it, but over in St. Mary's County, they wanted the bigger piece of the profit coming out of it. And this guy was going to spend mostly his money, and he said it didn't make sense to him, and he walked away. Something like that. I think if we could find somebody else like that, I don't know if the times have changed economically for that sort of project, but it would bring people in, and we would have something unique that's different than these other places that we're talking about. And you could come from New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, and you could come right across the area. Now, there are some people in the meeting that we had here, standing up wall around, said that we don't want that, says it's going to be gridlocked in Calio, if we have those companies, there'd be so much traffic. Well, that's simply not so, but no matter what you do, people are going to be against it.
Right.
I don't care what it is.
Yes.
You know, we started out this conversation with, there's more people here in the county. Clearly, we have an attraction, even if it's only as a residential county. But we also have an attraction as a tourist, I mean, for tourism. So, I mean, we need revenue to do the things we want to do, to fix the sanitary system, to have a sheriff's department, have everything they need, to give our schools the good AC units that we need to replace. We need money. And trying to attract new businesses is great, and I'm not, I sat on the Economic Development Committee, so it's dear to my heart. But we're not capitalizing on that which we already know. We know we're a tourist destination. We know we're attractive to people because we don't have McDonald's, and we don't have Chick-fil-A's on every corner. There's a reason that all those, I'm not sure we got a lot of new homes out of COVID, but I think the people that owned homes here are now here. That's why we have more people.
Right.
We don't have more revenue because they've been paying real estate taxes all along anyway.
But we got more costs because they're here.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So, yeah, we do have more people, we do have to find the money. But we, I would like to see us focus on tourism. And, you know, lodging taxes, those are taxes that don't affect the people that live here. They're taxing the people that come here and use our solid waste facilities that are overflowing. The one down on Route 200 was closed. They couldn't take any more solid waste today. So, we need to, we need to get off the dime and stop just looking at real estate as being the only revenue source for this county. We are an attraction as a tourist destination. Look at pages of Airbnbs. There's hundreds. And, you know, business license, thirty dollars, I don't know that that's a big revenue stream, but it certainly would give us some information, that we currently have no earthly idea what businesses are operating in this county.
And I think that's a key point.
And I don't, I mean, there are pros and cons. But if thirty-dollar business license is going to keep somebody from doing business, they probably shouldn't be going into business anyway.
It's not going to keep them. They're just not going to tell us. And so we're no better off than we are now, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, we have to figure out an enforcement thing. But, I mean, again, it's the defeatist thing. We don't, we've never had one, so it's hard to implement it. I get that. It's hard for the treasurer's office, it's hard for planners, it's hard for supervisors to implement something new. I get that. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try.
One thing you said that I liked a lot was the idea of going after a tax reformer revenue on the Airbnbs, for example. I read the Kilmarnock Town business license fee, they call it that, or maybe that's not the exact rate, but they can't call it a tax, so it's a business license fee. And there's a rate set per one hundred dollars of gross receipts. And the rate for rental properties is the highest rate they have. Most of the others are much lower. The point being, and one of the, the woman who cleans our house also cleans some Airbnbs down there, and she's having to pay this, she says it's a pain in the ass, because she's got Airbnbs down there. And she said, this is raising my cost. The point I made her is, you should raise your prices. That's why those taxes are higher. Well, they're just going to get more of that.
North Carolina, as a rule, it's nine percent tax, lodging tax.
Yes, some are even higher. So I think that if revenue is what we need to do a lot of the stuff we have here, and given the fact that rental property and tourism is a big deal here, that is the where to collect it. So I think, you know, rather than focusing on a comprehensive look at business licenses and all that, we should, to your point, Charles, focus very laser-like on how do we deal with this rental property issue, and how do we get revenue out of that, because it is driving up the cost of infrastructure in this county. So let's focus on that specifically. Because it's clearly an industry that is big and growing here, and is a potential opportunity right in front of our face.
So, John, I have a question. So are you saying right now, if Northumberland County does not collect the tax on Airbnb?
That's not true.
Well, we pay, there's property taxes on the houses that they are, but is there...
No, that's Commissioner Revenue gets a check from Airbnb every month because we have a short-term registry, and we entered that into it last year, and they get a check from each year, I mean, each month, from Airbnb. The problem with that is they do not itemize that. So we don't know which, how many Airbnbs are contributing to that. We don't know if they're paying their fair share. We don't know, they don't, they don't tell us the one in downtown Reedville makes more money than the one down on Hull Creek. And, but, but we're getting tens of thousands of dollars every month.
So what's the basis in...
I'm sorry, I was going to ask, what order of magnitude is that?
Last I heard, it was twenty thousand a month, something like that.
And that's at two percent, correct?
I'm not sure what the rate is.
Well, but what's the basis of this collection? Is there an order that specifies what the rates are and who's responsible?
There's a short-term rental registry, and I'm not, I don't know the exact details. You talk to Todd Thomas, and he will fill you in.
That makes me feel a little better because I owned an Airbnb, and we sold it last year. We owned it for two years. And every time we rented it, it said local tax, like fifty dollars, something like that, for every stay. And I was like, I didn't think Northumberland had a tax, but I guess it does, and I never questioned it.
Just got one last year, two years.
Yeah, I think they probably put that in there and pocketed it until we created a registry and told them we wanted our money. From, according to Todd, he got March's check, but he had never gotten January's and February's. And then he had to hound them, and then in April, he got April and January and February. But they, they didn't want to give him January and February, but they, he had to hound them to get it.
Who's collecting this?
The Commissioner of Revenue.
In the county.
So I can tell you, as a host, it certainly looks like you're paying a Northumberland County tax because it says local tax.
Well, and also, it sounds like they're collecting it in a sort of loup somme from the, you know...
Airbnb verbo.
Airbnb verbos of the world. Which doesn't give us any particular information as to how many there are and where they're located.
And that's the way they like it.
But I don't think there's any way around it.
There's no way for Todd to tell, to make sure that they're submitting, remitting the right amount. Because we do not know what...
That the company's submitting the right amount.
Right, because it's not itemized.
Or it doesn't disclose who the actual taxpayers are.
Well, I don't think that matters as much as the location.
The property location would be nice to know.
Are, and you just said there's lots and lots of them. I don't know that. I've never seen any of it.
But ecotourism, there's, I mean, you can go from Airbnbs, you go to ecotours. I mean, we have so many resources here that city people drive two and three hours to come to look at our water. And so we just, we just need to, we are an attractive county.
We're a heritage area.
But, so this is a solvable problem. If we don't know who they are, we don't know how much they're paying and so on, this is a more solvable problem than let's license everybody at this point, which is, you know, got pros and cons, as Heidi says. This one's got lots of upside with a specific problem and a specific possible outcome. To Charles' point, I think this should be what we focus on.
Going to Gerald's original point of departure, which was infrastructure. What I have heard on several occasions, one of the main reasons why Northumberland County doesn't have more businesses, and until recently, didn't have a lot of work-from-home type businesses, was because our electric infrastructure leaves a lot to be desired. We heard this from Northern Neck Electric, and to some degree from Virginia Power, there are no meter transmission wires going through this county. As a result, the electricity is problematic. And certainly, the application to a high-speed internet system is rather limited. And it's going to encourage people to locate solar farms in Lancaster and Richmond Counties as opposed to here, because there are no gathering lines.
And because it's so difficult to do solar in Northumberland, that's why a lot of people have their own. people have their own. I, I think that the internet thing is almost solved. Because I know several people that work from home and they have six-figure incomes. And I wouldn't be, well, I wouldn't be 40 either, you know. Nobody's asking. I mean, you don't know what, what they're doing.
But, you know, if you were going to set up an industrial park, what's that? And if you were going to be running businesses out of that industrial park, they would, they may not have the electrical capacity available to do that.
But that's where the planning comes in. That, that's where, why, why you plan.
I don't know of any businesses that have not got enough electricity. As Mr. Fisher said at a previous meeting, an Omega certainly doesn't seem to be hurting for electricity. I mean, we don't have big transmission lines, but that's not what you use. You use the regular transmission lines. And.
Omega generates a lot of its own power.
Well, I've never heard of any.
Most businesses don't.
I've never had it brown out.
The most do. I don't know about the shoreside, whether they do or not. They probably pay half a million dollars or more a month to Virginia Power.
To get electricity.
I, I don't, I would say it'd be more than that if I had to guess. And they've got a lot going on down there. And that's just during the months between May and November. After that, it falls right off.
Well, sure. Well, they're not processing seafood for most months.
Then there's all that excess capacity when they're not running.
Yeah. So, I, I, I agree. And I look at our first note on analyze the pros and the cons of a business license. And this is where this starts. You've got to start from somewhere. You've got to, you've got to kick this around and to figure out where we are. If you're going to talk about generating a business license, we don't have the data. And when you don't have the data, you're left out in the cold. And you have to find a way to gather that data and then move forward. One of the things that, then when I look around all the other areas that are around us, we've got to stop, again, being reactive. And we've got to go out. We're not the only dead-end county in this country. So, my question is, my question is, the county is going to have to invest in some sort of, and Stuart, you're a research guy, so you know what I'm talking about. You're going to have to invest in a, not necessarily a grant writer, but a utility person that can answer the question. We don't have people that give us the answer. The board of supervisors, as smart as they are, can't give us the answer because that's not their forte. But we're in a position now where in the next 10 years, people are going to be selling homes and stuff because they can't afford them. So, we're going to have to come up with a way to find out. This is, this country, you got the internet. I don't know why it's so hard. You got the internet. All you do is ask Siri, you know, Siri, who else is like us in this country? And then find out what they're doing. So.
At the risk of stepping on the toes of the Economic Development Commission, I do prefer a sort of targeted, narrowly focused recommendation with regard to taxation of the kind that John and Heidi were talking about. You know, tourism, however defined, short-term rentals, however defined. These are things that we can address in an intelligent way. Just gathering statistics for the sake of having them, regardless of the cost, regardless of the impact on taxes, doesn't really appeal to me unless we can demonstrate enough revenue generated by the things that we've been talking about, specifically targeted.
We don't.
But you won't know.
But, so I read the minutes from the last meeting. I don't understand what data you're trying to get and what, what, what information that's going to provide you to take action on. I don't get it.
Well, say, say, for example, you want to apply for a, a, an infrastructure grant. And people say, well, what makes you think you're justified to ask him for one? You're going to say, oh, I just think it's a good idea. It's not. Here's the statistics. We have X number of people. We have X number of cars that go over our roads. We have X number of businesses. And when you get that data and you put, you fill in those forms with that data, then that's a little bit more attractive than just saying, oh, I think we need $10 million. But what are you needing for? Well, we'll find something to talk about.
I've never heard of a grant like that to begin with. I mean, you stirred it up like with that metaphor by talking about transportation. Well, the Department of Transportation knows how many people are crossing our road.
That's what I'm saying. But does Northumberland County know that? I mean, you call B-Dot in.
To a certain extent, we're talking about a catch 22. You can't make a lot of cases to Richmond or the Chamber of Commerce, Virginia Chamber of Commerce, because our local Chamber of Commerce is almost nonexistent.
Right.
Or to our local university, which we don't have. You need some data to back those requests up. On the other hand, if we were to propose to the Board of Supervisors that we add some statisticians to the payroll at the cost of $100,000 a year or north, fully weighted, that's going to fall on deaf ears.
Even on the Development Commission, it's just got approval to hire an intern with those exact qualifications. I haven't read the job description. And so, they're looking at summer intern from, it's a marketing program, a marketing student. They're really.
And who would you get? And how does it work out monthly?
It's completely free because they're not getting paid and they're working from home.
We could run a little cross.
We could piggyback on theirs. In fact, we could go to them and say, here's some data. Because they, they want to know the same thing. They still haven't answered the same question I posed to Mr. Parker. What data do we want? And what do we think it's going to tell us? They haven't figured that one out yet either. But the intern, to your point, Patrick, I think having an intern to do that sort of analysis. So, if we, if we can identify, during the discussion at Board of Supervisors the other day, Stuart made the presentation, I said, you know, one thing we could get from the state of Virginia would be all of the EINs for every business registered in Northumberland County rather than a desktop thing, as he did quite, quite commendably. They may not tell us very much, but it's a start. There's all kinds of data already out there. The question is getting somebody whose job is to go find the data. What's already there that we don't have to grow much more stuff? And now, is that data valuable?
It may or may not be.
Precisely.
But it would be better than whatever's in second place.
But again, to the, to the point you were making just prior to that, again, if we could spend a lot of time dwelling on this data gathering thing and perhaps do that in parallel. But in the meantime, if there's an action that's required, I think it's more targeted and then it's going in third.
And that would be my preference as well. I think we ought to take a look at the tax rate on Airbnbs.
Okay. But now, back to the business license. If somebody is coming to open a, consider Northumberland to open a business. Economic Development Committee gets people to be interested. We can't tell them how many lawn services there are, how many restaurants there are, how many barbers there are. Because if I'm coming in with a barber shop and you already have 100 shops per every 50 heads, I'm probably not going to want to open a barber shop.
They even want to know what the competition looks like.
Any, I mean, when you go to Northern Virginia, and I know we're not Northern Virginia, but you can go to Fairfax County, and they can tell you how many lawn services they have, how many plumbers they have, how many contractors, how many carpenters, welders, blah, 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 blah. We cannot tell anybody that. That's number one problem that I have with the county. I think, I think we're going to be reacting all the time if we don't get proactive and get some data about our own county. The other thing is, there's merchant capital taxes. There's, I mean, how many of these lawn services are paying taxes on their lawn mowers that they carry three to a trailer and all their trimmers when each hardware store in town, I can tell you after 30 years of paying them, I paid on inventory that didn't sell necessarily. And so, and it's easy to tell. Lillian is there, Jets Hardware's there, Crazy Crab is there. So, we know who to get that tax money from. But there's a lot of businesses that are operating that have capital equipment that we are not collecting taxes on because we don't know about it.
It's called the underground economy. No, no sophisticated country in the world has solved that problem, Heidi.
Well, I think we're, I, I think we haven't tried to get any data.
Heidi's right. You can certainly do a better job than we have.
We can do better than we have. We have done nothing. Nothing. Except collect taxes from those people who put signs on the highway, Jets Hardware, Crazy Crab Restaurant, whoever, Coral Insurance. You know, if we have a sign out there, somewhere along the line, they figure out they got to get taxes from us. I, I just think we can do a better job of, if we know what we're dealing with to some, we're not going to know it perfectly, just like we don't know perfectly on Airbnbs, who's paying those taxes. But something is better than nothing. And right now, we have nothing.
The Attorney Revenue Service hasn't found those folks. The state of Virginia hasn't found those folks. How are we going to do it?
Let's pause for a second. Where did this intern come from, did you refer?
I don't know if they're going to hire the one that applied, but.
We're not hiring anybody. They're accepting volunteers.
Correct. That's right. But no, it's a very specific position with a job description and all that. And they're committing to eight weeks. It's not a hire. You're right. Okay. This person was, I don't remember what school. It was not a, a Virginia school, but they live here. Their parents live here. So, they were a rising junior, this particular individual.
Okay. So, it's an eight-week gig. Presumably, this person, whoever they may be, is probably on summer vacation from some school somewhere.
Right.
That's better than what we have now.
That's right. No, I agree.
And maybe we could simply tell them to count the Airbnbs. I don't know. But it's better than what we have now.
Okay. So, we analyzed the pros and the cons.
That's good.
We got, we got an idea. Because you need a sense of direction. So, and I'd like to end this because I do want to get on to chapter three. Stuart, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, well, I mean, we just jumped into this and I was going to set the stage with what I could find, what I found regarding business license. I went on the search for about a half hour today with the search engine, looking for businesses in Northumberland County and EIN, EIN reports and all the rest of that stuff. And I couldn't find anything. I mean, I didn't spend a lot of time on it, and I'm not a professional researcher, but perhaps Todd could help us with that. But a lot of that information is confidential and privileged. I did find the Census Quick Facts page for Northumberland County, and apologize for the small size. But according to Census Quick Facts, there are, 2021, there were 304 total employee establishments in Northumberland County. And.
Sorry, 304 total, what kind of?
Total employer establishments, 2021.
So.
People that hired, have staff.
I understand what that means. What I was going to ask is if that data included self-employed or?
Self-proprietieships.
Self-proprietieships or things like that.
If you're, if you're a single person and you run a lawn business and don't hire anybody, then I would say no, because you're not an employer establishment.
Well, by employer establishment, I assume they're talking about employers that pay some sort of payroll tax.
Sure.
So, if you're a one-man shop and you're running as an escort, that would include that?
If you're running as an escort, but if you're running in the underground economy, it would be.
If you're running as an LLC or a sole.
So, it would include sole.
So, employers, you know, and you give your cousin Vinnie 20 bucks to help you mow a lawn, that is not going to go into that database, correct?
The reason I brought it up was my desktop exercise came up with 411 with the name field and the 911 address. And that's what you all asked if that was a representative sample. So, the Census thinks there are less, which is, of course, three years before this, so it's dated. But the thing that stuck out with me, total employment, 1,644 people in the county. And there are 12,391 estimated July 2023, if you do the math. That says that 13.27% of the population works in a business within Northumberland County, owned in Northumberland County.
Including government.
Correct. So, that means that whatever the balance from 100%, are people that either are retired and living off their dividend income, or they are going out of the county to work.
Or their kids.
Yeah. Well, 16 and above, I believe. Well, it doesn't say that. So, then we go down and we talk about, it has total annual payout. These are general big numbers, but I just thought we'd, we'd look at this for a second. The percent change in total employment from 2020 to 2021, of course, these are dated figures, but it was a loss of employment by 4.6%. And I believe that was before COVID. So, that's a problematic statistics. Total non-employer establishments, and I think that gets to your single-person business, 1,148. And then we get the suppressed information. I mentioned that to you about that they do not give out information when there's a small group, I think less than 10, that they could be singled out. And so, they suppress the all-employer firms, a number of all-employer firms, a number of women-owned firms, remember, number of minority-owned firms and veteran-owned firms, because their numbers are so small that, that it would lead to somebody being able to figure out who is what. But that's just, I just thought, I throw that out there. And again, that's a big giant cut at the whole county level. But, you know, that 13% of estimated population working in a, that's not self-employed, working for another company, that's disconcerting.
That's very concerning.
Well, you also have to take into consideration that a lot of those are part-time jobs. And you've got a lot of people in this county who are working more than one part-time job. So, there's a certain amount of double accounting. But still, you know, even factoring that in, a rather low percentage of people in this county work for Northumberland County-based businesses.
That 344 number that you had.
304, yes, sir.
Did that even count? Did that count government, sheriff's office?
I, I don't have the backstory.
Schools?
I don't have the backstory to that. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I could have clicked on the information, but of course, it's a snapshot, so I can't get there. But I could, I could try and get online and look for.
That's all based on payroll tax.
That's all people that submit tax returns.
So, presumably, that would include the school system.
Yeah. At least sheriff's office.
How many employee, county employees do we have, including the school system? Like?
I know the school system is, I think, the number one employer in the county. I don't know. I don't have the number.
Okay.
And those other departments, with the exception of the sheriff's office, are relatively small. The sheriff's offices aren't all that big, but it's bigger than most. Forty-two.
Forty-two on the sheriff's department?
Probably 300.
Okay. What were you, what were we at? What was the question? I apologize. I forgot.
There wasn't one you, you were telling us what you would have been researching.
Well, I thought there was a question about, do the employers, do they have the?
The sheriff's department, government, schools include hearing that number. If that's what you were looking for.
An establishment is a single physical location at which business is conducted or where services. An establishment is a single physical location at which business is conducted or where services or industrial operations are performed. It is not identical to a company or enterprise, may consist of one establishment or more, two activities under a single location, single ownership.
So that counts Dollar Generals as one, is what he said?
Right, each Dollar General, no, the corporate, the big corporate.
There's separate corporations for each store, like taxi cabs in New York. They would, there would be multiple.
Well, I mean, they could be franchises, or Dollar Generals are not franchises?
I think they're not. I thought some were, some weren't. I know that's true in McDonald's, but, you know.
According to the article in the Wall Street Journal, that where they're closing family dollar stores, they are not franchised.
Family dollars.
Well, the company, the Family Dollar is now part of Dollar Tree. So those are both in the same situation. I don't think that the other Dollar chain is any different than that third company of stores. Because they were talking about the investment they're making in those stores and the facilities.
I actually don't know.
Well, this is a screenshot of the Chamber of Commerce webpage, and some of these points have multiple businesses on it. Like Lillian's got Jets Hardware and Jet Marine and Butler's Bake Shop and things of that nature. But that, they have a map on their webpage, they have a business listing of all of them, but all of those are the ones that have signs on the road that we know about, Booth.
What is the date of that data, do you know?
I, I screenshotted it today, so six-twenty. I don't know when they entered that data, but that's what's displayed.
I'm just wondering if this is pre-Gilroy or post-COVID?
I, I don't know.
From what I understand, the Chamber of Commerce has been very inactive and their website hasn't been updated in years.
There are serious formatting problems too, I mean, logos over top of other logos and things like that.
So it's probably crafted.
But, I mean, it is a, it is a start if we wanted to create a list from that. But, you know, I don't know of how much data the State Department of Taxation is willing to, how much is easily publicly available.
I'm guessing that like the IRS, the State Department of Taxation is limited by confidentiality laws, and they'll give you what data as long as it's not traceable.
Aggregated data.
They're not gonna tell us things like, you know.
How many lawnmower services there are here?
No, they're also not gonna tell us, you know, how many machine shop operators there are in the county when it may be only one.
So we're speculating on what is and is impossible here. What might make sense, Stuart, if you could hook up with Robert or the Economic Development Commission and see what they're doing with that intern and see if it makes sense to have that person be part of this effort? Because they, they're looking to do something similar. Take the load off of you and see if we can get something.
Yeah, I mean, if the Economic Development Committee is already working on it, I have no problem with them doing their job.
They're not working on this specifically, but I know they want to know this.
Yeah, I mean, I would think they would. So, yeah, I don't, I'm not saying we have to recreate a problem. But the problem for them, let it be their problem.
No, I mean, I don't know what we can do or should do in this area that doesn't overlap on the mandate of the Economic Development Commission. Maybe you could sound that out, so.
You're going to overlap anyway. Because we live in an area where certain businesses, it's kind of like Bay Transit. You're gonna overlap with home transport systems. There's no way you can avoid it. My main thing is just simply to look at the fact that there are businesses operating. But the question is, since we, that's why we need to know. And I know the economic development folks are working and they can have at it.
I agree.
But my thing is, I just don't wanna be the same place ten years from now, wondering, you know, what happened.
One of the things that occurred to me, or has occurred to me, is unlike the Business Development Commission, which is sort of inherently proactive. The Planning Commission particularly does what the Board of Supervisors says or, you know, what we can suggest to them. But that's fairly.
On paper, the Planning Commission has more authority than the Economic Development Commission. They didn't meet for several years because they didn't have the quorum, but they have more freedom. You know, Stuart got them to approve us examining this. Economic Development Commission doesn't have to ask, but really have the authority to do it. We do now. So there, I mean, there's also ten of us.
You wear two hats. Is we the Planning Commission or is we Economic Development?
The we, when I say it, is Planning Commission, because I'm not a member of the.
That's not true.
No, I just, sort of the lay of the land.
Right, right. And of course, we appreciate it.
And Karen, that's why Karen's really glad that I've been attending, because we can share this so that you guys know what's going on vice versa. They will be happy to know that we're into this. They will probably be glad to share their intern with us to get the ball rolling on this. But we do have something in front of us, and that is what the Board of Supervisors is asking to do. They don't have that in front of them.
So obviously, we're gonna have to table the business license conversation, because that's gonna be ongoing as far as, till we get some sort of clear-cut direction on where to go.
May I make a suggestion on that?
Sure.
So we've got a specific task to come up with pros and cons. So we can be, we've already begun making a list of those things now. I mean, Stuart, I know you're taking copies of those. I will be glad to compile a formal pro and con stack of things to be able to have something ready for them to bring back for further discussion for addition or subtraction. The question I think goes back to what you started with, Mr. Parker, and that is, what are we doing with this? And that is, you know, are there specific things we need to do to get this county moving so that as part of this, it isn't just a pro and con list? We're gonna maybe weight it towards pro by saying, we think that there should be some sort of registry or license to go after this thing. We don't have the authority to execute, but we do have the authority to make recommendations. Just giving them a pro and con list, I mean, we went through the exercise of figuring out what properties were available. They've done nothing with, it's on their July agenda now. But let's make this more assertive, it's not just a pro and con list. We've looked at this, we don't think general business, I'm just throwing this out there, we don't think general business license makes sense, but doing more in the tourism area, for example.
Right, because from that, you're gonna draw some general conclusions. And one is that you have a school system that operates on fifty, sixty percent of your budget. And the information that you are providing now is gonna give the school systems the direction. We don't need any more barbers or cosmetologists. The community is asking, the business world is asking us now for folks that can just simply read, you know.
Start with the basics.
Just start with the basic, I mean, you know, you got, see, the school system has been operating and the community has been, we're all separate. Instead of sitting down and saying, I got a problem, my employees don't even know how to tabulate. Or use a calculator. That's, you gotta make some progressive changes in a world, in a world of competition. It's not just Northumberland County or the Northern Neck, but our children have to compete with the world. And they can't compete with the world if they can't think.
You know, I was looking at the proficiency rates, which is measured by testing. Our proficiency rates in the county for reading and math are sort of awful and bad. And that's not, that's going to be a problem in attracting jobs. I think it serves a salutary purpose just to communicate with the school system that we've got a change for the better on basic skills, and we're observing what you've been doing in that regard.
I just simply want them to know, do I use the door or do I use the window? What do I call?
Well, what I'm concerned about is, you know, if you are a company looking at new sites. In fact, Department of Education data is readily available. And frankly, compared to a lot of other places, not just in the state, because I agree we're not gonna compete with Fairfax anytime soon, but compared to surrounding counties, our stores are bad. But yet they keep coming. Yet who keeps coming? Yet new students keep coming to Northumberland County.
Apparently, the food's pretty good.
Stuart.
And it's closer for some people.
Can you bring that chart up again?
Quick fact, quick fact.
Show the employment. What is the total employment?
I'm sorry?
Sixteen hundred, something.
Sixteen hundred and forty-four, is that what that says?
Yes, sir, total employment.
In 2023, we have eleven hundred and eighty-one studios. That just.
It said it did not include the government.
It does not?
How about that? When you look there, it says this series excludes government establishments, except for wholesale liquor establishments, retail liquor stores, book publishers.
Okay. Because I was, it didn't make sense to have the same number of people working.
So you're saying it does not include the government?
Yeah, that's what you just said.
It includes government establishments, except for liquor establishments, liquor stores, book publishers, federally turned savings institutions, credit unions and hospitals. The other tidbit of information I wanted to pass along to you regarding business licenses, when I talked with Todd about it, he wasn't too thrilled. And the other thing I want to relay is that the board meeting, they weren't too thrilled about it either. I wasn't sure they were gonna recommend it, but one of the Board of Supervisors said, it can't hurt for them just to look into it. So whatever we, and I said, we're gonna give them a recommendation. I said, we're gonna look at the pros and the cons and give you a recommendation. We're not gonna give them a list of pros and cons. But I'm not sure if we say yes, that they would adopt it. So I'm, you know, they have the power in the county, so.
Absolutely.
But when I talked with Todd, he was not really enthused about it, but I asked him to, I asked him about the entire state of the counties, how many didn't have business licenses. He didn't look at the whole state, but he did look at the neighboring counties. So Richmond County and Lancaster County do not have business licenses.
Oh, I thought Lancaster did.
Westmoreland does.
I thought both.
Essex does. However, Warsaw does, Tappahannock does, Kilmarnock does.
Oh, maybe that's why.
So that's why the county doesn't have business license, because the businesses are concentrated in the towns, and the towns have the business licenses. But it is a comparative disadvantage when Northumberland County, and you wanna locate in Lancaster County and not a town, if one had a business license, which don't, was, do not, so.
What was Todd's reluctance, just something new to figure out a system for?
It's like the short-term rental, so you gotta, you gotta start and get a procedure in place. You gotta get a mailing list, you have to spend money to stuff envelopes and send postage out.
Now, he's being negative.
I mean, I get that, and I think that's, that's what we've been upping.
I mean, as Mr. Crowley said at the last meeting, it's not a revenue generator, thirty-five dollars a year.
No, you're probably paying for whoever's stuffing the mail.
You know, you'd probably be lucky.
Okay, even if it was, it's still probably lose money on it, given the cost of personnel loss.
Yeah, I mean, the short-term rentals, we're in the hole for staff time. But now, we're getting that revenue in the tens of thousands, it's starting to make sense and break even, so.
The other thing on revenue that struck me in the local paper was Whitestone put all their budget stuff out, and their sewer system and sanitation system is fully funded by their user fees. It's a, it's not even in the Whitestone budget, they don't even have it in the federal budget.
I don't consider that a sewer system, but it's a mass drain field, is what it is.
I get that it's a much smaller thing, because it's only a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget period. But, I mean, that is another thing, since it's just Reedville and it's just Calio. You know, you raise taxes, you raise user fees, but somewhere along the line, people have to pay for what they use. And I have no idea what the sanitation fees are, I have no idea what the promises that were made to them when they were signed up for it. But it is a problem to have all of this stuff and all of their equipment going, I mean, forty-five-year-old generators is just not a good idea. And so I don't know if user fees is something that we should.
Well, I've been talking with Mr. Cadlock, he said they raised them a couple of years in a row, that they're at the top percentile in the state. And what everybody, all the engineering firms that tell us, say that most counties make money on the water to offset the losses in the sanitary. We do not have water. So we can't make money off that to.
Well, how is the county that enforcing collection?
So Stuart, so from what we've talked about tonight, can you kind of, is there a way you can list, okay, like John said, pros, cons, so we can at least have something to talk about? We were all over the place tonight, but we had to be, because that's how you get new ideas. So, and you're gonna generate.
I'd be happy to do that.
I mean, whatever Stuart does, I mean, Stuart's the expert on this.
Oh, I wouldn't say that, Mr. Cost has got a lot of experience in various roles before mine, and perhaps we could work collaboratively. And we could have something for y'all to pick apart at the next meeting.
Okay, so can we go now to the chapter three comprehensive plan revisions?
If that's what you'd like to do.
I'd like to do that, because we'll get home sometime around this time.
Why, what do you have to do?
At this point.
Eat dinner? Okay. I could give you an update on what the new information I got for chapters one and two, but I think that's, we'll just dispense with that tonight. Because we're kind of behind. And chapter three, in the email, I talked with y'all about, specifically about solar. I mean, we can go by page by page, however y'all like to do it. But in reviewing chapter three, you know, a lot of things, I mean, basically, it talks about villages. And one thing that I'd like for y'all to think about is there's our growth area picking off, you know. They're pretty small, we look at the county map, we got the Calio, and we got the support areas in Lothberg, and we got Eastville. Got to grow east in Eastville, because we got conservation easements to the west, so there's no way to grow that way. Burgess, according to the comp plan, is supposed to be our central hub for business. And there was even talk about putting sewer in Burgess. And then we got Lillian, which is another support area, and of course, Reedville support area, and then Wakaniko Church area, and Kilmarnock down here as well. But, you know, are these areas large enough to support businesses? I mean, there's a lot of farmland there now. So that's just one thing I'd like for y'all to think about. The other thing is perhaps putting solar near the end, after we talk about all the villages and there are special districts. And that may be some of the things that Mr. Cost was talking about, we're talking about and have to done. But the policies for special areas on page thirty-seven of chapter three. We have historical and archaeological areas, and we address that in this paragraph here. And the highway corridor, which has not been implemented, but it's a concept affair, but we have not gone into the zoning ordinance to make those changes, because it's very unpopular with businesses when they have to put in million-dollar turn lanes. So I don't think the county has really embraced that and not really taken ownership of that and saying, that's B dot, we can't help that, it's B dot. But that's, I don't know if that's. But that's, that's, I don't know if that's, well, I'll just leave it there. And then areas identified for reservoirs. And so I'm thinking that it would be very easy to add a D and put solar energy facilities here. I'm wondering what you all, if you think that's an appropriate place to put it, if Mr. O'Brien had said previously we needed a new chapter for just solar energy facilities. But we talked about the villages and everything, and the growth areas, and then we talked about special areas. And, you know, I think I've talked to y'all before about our growth areas, we need to protect them. And we've, I've had one inquiry about a comprehensive of a solar energy facility within the Eastville growth area. And they wanted to know if it was compatible with the comp plan. And I had to email them and say, no, it's not compatible with the comp plan, because the growth areas are for businesses to serve the local area. And retail businesses, specifically retail businesses to serve their local area. And we, the county considers a solar energy facility as a utility and doesn't employ anybody. They're going to remotely computerize, monitor it. And so basically said it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, because you're in our growth area. So my question is, do we need a buffer around the growth area to say we do not want solar energy facilities a thousand feet from our growth areas? Or is that something that may not be of interest to anybody? I don't know. But we need to protect our growth areas, because hopefully someday somebody is going to build something there.
Look, is Richmond County putting them in forestry areas? Because they're not, they're not their growth areas either.
One of the things that everybody does, and Lancaster and Richmond are great examples of this, Essex as well, is you place these things in areas where you can have a fair amount of land relatively cheaply. In our case, it would be in the, in the places that are already zoned agricultural. Perhaps what we should simply say is that, aside from any other verbiage with regard to the use of agricultural spaces, solar gathering facilities, solar power gathering facilities are permissible within Zone A1.
Because that's where I'm going to go, if they come here at all, that's where they're going to be.
That's true. By conditional use permit, the board supervisors. Is there an A1 and outside of, are you referring to the support areas on these maps, Stuart?
The blue, blues, yeah, the blue is the support areas, and the red is the.
So is that, is that what you're referring to, when you say they can't put them in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Are you saying with a thousand feet?
This was in, this was in a commercial hub area.
In the red?
Yeah, it was in the commercial hub area for, for Eastville.
Are we applying the same thought process to the support areas?
Yeah, when you say a thousand feet, what are you saying from?
I'm talking about a little buffer, a little zone around the growth area and support area that would, we would say we would not particularly like solar.
Around the red area?
Because, yeah. But the, the problem we have here, and it was alluded to when the Rural Solar Development Coalition came to talk to us, is that our highest capacity electrical lines are along the main roads, which our villages are along the main roads too. And those two things will conflict at some point.
Not unless, I mean, if they are buying agricultural land as close to the major transmission lines, that could very easily be between Eastville and Burgess, or between Eastville and Calio.
Well, that's what the comprehensive plan is here to say, that's what we want. We do not want them in our villages, we want them a thousand feet away, or whatever y'all, I mean, if y'all, if you don't think it's a good idea, we don't have to do it. I'm just.
Oh, I think it's an excellent idea.
Because.
I think the ideal place would be that by the Avalon Substation, which is all agriculture area there.
But the Avalon Substation is not a Dominion Substation, you know, the Northern Neck Electric Substation. We have no substations that are Dominion Energy.
Right, I agree. But at least the largest power line is there, not that it's big enough, but there is one there.
Well, none of the, none of the solar facilities we have been approached by have said they're going to tie into Northern Neck Electric lines.
There's nothing we're going to tie in?
No, no, no.
Regardless of, regardless of whether they're, who they're connecting to, the fact that you have an electric substation in the, in the middle of a cornfield, seems like an ideal place to put a solar station. That's not in a blue area. Well, it's pretty close, but how long have you talked with Matt?
It's, Dominion is Dominion, and Northern Neck Electric is a different entity. And they came to us and said that they are not pursuing solar at this time.
Yes, it makes perfect sense, because we don't have the power line, so this is all purely theoretical discussion.
Well, apparently Dominion does.
Does what?
Have power lines now.
I don't care where Dominion's power lines are, I think we should protect our growth and support areas by a buffer of some, I don't know if a thousand's the right number, but I do think those areas should be protected from solar.
Well, in that same property, and I'm not going to mention where it is, but a year or two before, they wanted to put a conservation easement on it. And I said, I mean, I, I went and talked with Latrell and Philip, and it's the same reasoning. We don't want conservation easement in a commercial hub where we want to attract businesses. So, you know, basically, if you want to do a conservation easement, as long as it's not in the growth area or support area, the county's going to say, yeah, that's okay. But, so, you know, they're not making any new land. And so that's why I brought out, because that thousand-foot buffer in fifty years may be the expanded support area. I mean, if, if they build it and they come, you know.
But your point all this is, we need to address this in your summary.
Well, the first question I ask is, do you, can, do you think this is an appropriate place to put the solar? I think it's a future land use plan, I think it's a growth area, I think it's an appropriate place. It's, it's a special area, but it, I mean, it's not a special area, but it's, it's guidance to a solar energy facility that we're, we're trying to, I mean, the whole thing is we want, we're telling where we want the growth to go. And so we need to tell them where we want the solar energy facilities. And from what I've heard before, it sounds like A1 outside of villages. And, and that's what we need to tell them, so they don't come in with the applications that are in our growth area. And the whole idea is to, is to explain what the county wants. And that's, I'm not sure, I've got a complete handle on that with regards to solar energy facilities. But, you know, we can send it to the board, and if they like it, adopt it, if they don't like it, they'll tell us.
So is everybody kind of understanding?
So far, I think it's a great place to put it.
That we don't want solar in the growth area.
And I think this is a logical part of the comp plan to put it in.
We don't want solar farms.
Utility scale solar, yeah, we're up there. If a business wants to put them on a roof, or a little one beside them, then that's no problem.
Well, you know, that's actually possibly a more important point that we consider. If businesses can generate their own electricity without regard to the capacity of the main arteries by the two utilities, let's encourage that.
Well, I mean, we, we kind of do now, because, I mean, all it takes is a remodel, repair, building permit, certification from an engineer that your roof can handle the weight of the solar, and then you're, an electrical inspection. And so really, for ground, ground-mounted or roof-mounted residential, small-scale, decentralized solar, we don't really have, I mean, we got building permits and, and electrical inspections, but it's no, no big process for that.
And we don't need to reference that in the comprehensive plan, or certainly not in this chapter, correct?
We kind of do.
Well, I mean, if we want to, if we want to talk about what we, what we want in our solar, I mean, I don't think it's going to be too inappropriate to put that in our solar section here. But really, the growth plan is how the land's going to be used, and which land is suitable for what. This is what you need to stay away from. And so I, I just felt that that's, that's an appropriate place to put it, and I'm glad some of y'all agree that. And if you want to go through each village and discuss that, or if anybody has anything that they like to point out that they feel not appropriate, we can, I'll entertain that.
I did have some questions, because there, how long ago was the current version written?
Two thousand and sixteen.
So there's, for example, on page fourteen, number six, where it talks about sewage, this is an observation, not a policy, do we need to recommend a policy? So we heard page fourteen, number six.
I mean, it's, it's a statement, it's a statement of fact, it's that there is no septic in it, and this is one of the things we have to face. I mean, if, if we leave it out, then perhaps people will think we have sewer in those areas. We need to face our limitations and let, and let anybody that's outside of the county know that, that we don't have that in.
So go to the next page, there's another sample. We're talking about Calio. The whole bunch of recommendations there are setting specific goals. Have those things been done? Develop plans for sustainable water supply that includes a reservoir?
No.
Okay, so what are we doing about stuff like this?
I think one of these meetings we had where you were absent was, we talked about reservoirs. And the general consensus is that they are so expensive as to be economically not viable.
Okay. That being the case, what do we do with stuff like this?
Delete it. Leave it blank.
I wasn't here, so what was the discussion?
I thought we talked about keeping it in, just in case it becomes rivals or whatever.
Well, I mean, we're going to have the reservoir section in there, but it may not be an action item. This may, we could drop this goal for, if that's what the planning commission wants to do. It's not that we're going to delete all the reservoir information, that's in another section of the comp plan, I think Chapter Five. But, I mean, I don't, I don't foresee the county spending any money looking to do this. So maybe it needs to be taken out, because.
I think it sends a false impression, I sort of like that from reading it.
Well, it's, it's not just a lot of money for the county, as a percentage of the county budget, it's a hell of a lot of money.
Yeah. And we're not doing it.
I think we're generally of the opinion that it's not going to happen.
Ron was the thought about including it in there with the caveat in the beginning was that this was considered at one time by the planning commission, but found to be not feasible. So that the next planning commission that comes along, and somebody comes up, why don't we go with reservoirs, they can see that somebody's already talked about that.
So you're saying we should say that here?
I think so. But, I mean, that's just me, I don't know whether that's appropriate or not.
I think that makes perfect sense, a little context is very useful for a future reader of this thing. As opposed to, like, now I'm going through it, I'm going, well, what happened to this? You know, it makes sense.
Why don't we just insert a parenthetical following that sentence that mentions reservoir, saying which is not economically feasible at the moment at this time, or at this time?
That's two separate things, though. I mean, if it's not a goal for Calio, we should remove it to maintain the integrity of the document. We talk about reservoirs in Chapter Five, and so in that chapter, we can say we've looked at it, and we found it, but as a goal, it really does kind of mislead the reader.
Agreed.
And so I think John's point to the integrity of the document would be to remove that as a goal, if it's not really a goal.
I can delete, anything you want me to delete, that is very easy to do.
Page twenty under Eastville, you list the businesses we have, including a pharmacy, there, that would have been nice to still have, but we don't.
Yeah.
Let's go on, yeah.
It was nice.
But if you need your dog trained.
Yeah, we got a dog training facility. On page twenty-nine.
Well, there's also a, a goal for reservoir on Eastville, too, number five, under the develop plans for Crab Mill Stream.
Or slide from the bottom of that paragraph. See YMCA is the right of the right of that.
Can we just up or down, agree to go through this?
Okay.
Chapter Three and delete references to reservoirs at this point? Because we're going to come back to it in Chapter Five.
Yeah, and there's not a Family Dollar store in Eastville anymore either, so.
Well, I know in the last time I was tangentially involved in this, that they were of the opinion we shouldn't name any establishments. You could say grocery store and hardware store, but you don't say Allison's Hardware and Food Line. So I could remove all, I could just change everything, not put in, take out all brand names.
Yeah, take it generic, because.
Okay, if that's okay with you all.
Small stores?
At page twenty-nine, under Reedville. Did you get to take the goal out of Eastville, too, for the reservoir?
Yeah, that's, I have that.
Okay.
That, deleting is easy, I'm sorry, twenty-nine?
Page twenty-nine, yeah. Talked about a Tom Carefree guideline for rebuild being established.
This is twenty-nine. Yeah. The historic district, we, there is no historic district in North Omla County. We have historic areas, and we have an outline around Eastville, we got an outline in Reedville, and we can look at that. But there's never been filed, the pink line here is the outlined historic district. There's been no organization that filed paperwork with the National Historic, or whatever, the Antiquities, whatever the Department of State is that handles historic resources, to file the paperwork to make it an official bylaw district. It is a conceptual district, there is no board that will come out and tell you, you can't paint your shutters purple.
Is the recommendation there on page twenty-nine still active or not?
Well, I'm confused, because on twenty-eight, it says it's designated as a historic area and registered on the National Register of Historic Places. On the second paragraph of.
I'm not seeing.
It's on twenty-eight, under G? Second, the second paragraph?
Okay, well, okay, well, I'm, let me backtrack, I apologize, I misspoke. It is recognized, but it's not active.
Okay.
They do not have a board that reviews that you painted your shutters purple to tell you not to. There's no local board that controls any type of renovation or demolition or anything like that in, in, in Reedville. So basically, it's a district without T. Not that North Omla County residents want people to tell them what kind of bushes they can plant, and whether they can add garage, or if they can change the front door, put a new front door in.
Okay, so it is listed, but not enforced.
Just that we added the next, another sentence on that same paragraph that says, however, there is no governing body, there is no, there is no authority to enforce the provisions of the National Historic.
Now, there is no local authority, but it's state, state law that you cannot renovate a structure that's over fifty years without talking to the Department of Historic Resources.
Then let's say that, however, there is no local government, no local, local authority, only state rules provide or apply, or something like that, and then delete the reference on page twenty-nine. Fifty years, Stuart?
I think that's what. But it's got to be recognized, it has to be recognized. I was watching, do you ever watch, did you ever watch CBS series on Monocan?
Yes.
They were trying to make the back. They were trying to make the back, back, I guess, with Smokehouse into a tasting room and a bar for their bed and breakfast, and he said, I need to replace that door. I said, you can't replace the door. And it's one door that's got gaps in it this far. Anyway, that's an aside.
But so theoretically, all the construction that takes place on Main Street needs to be, because most of those buildings are over fifty years old, they need to get input from...
If they're recognized.
That's my understanding, but I'm not completely up to speed with that, and that's my interpretation.
Walk down Main Street tomorrow, knock on the door to tell everybody that's what it's got.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This is Northumberland County. This would not be a very popular thing for someone to undertake.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't really want to wake up those sleeping dogs. And Mr. Costas said what he wants to do, but I can't go on what Mr. Costas says. I need you all to say, we all agree with that. Do you understand what I'm saying? And, I mean, I guess if y'all don't...
Better let's leave it that way.
Well, no, I'm just saying that we need, I need input from the whole commission so that I know that's what you all say, instead of just being silent. I'm not saying Mr. Cost's ideas are bad, but I just need consensus to know that that's what everybody wants to do. And I'll be glad to take, put in, no local authority is established, and that state rules apply, or some verbiage of that, and taking out the town character, I guess, in there.
But then, what does that do to somebody who's reading the comp plan that has a house on Reedville, Main Street? They think they don't have to do anything, because there's...
The caveat is that state rules apply.
If it's a zoning issue, however, you still have to have a board supervisor, I think.
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so. Out of the six years I've been there, I've not heard of any, any question of whether it's a historic structure or not.
Does somebody want to come to whether it becomes a change of views?
Zoning is setbacks to property lines, so, and that, that sort of thing. But appearance is not really what the zoning does.
But it's a difference of opinion down there. Some people are for, some are against. I remember the Butler home right there, in front of the museum, which belongs to the museum now, Butler Family Gate. We needed to put new gutters on there. Well, we got prices on gutters, put some standard gutters up, but they weren't the kind that was in keeping with the gutters that were on there. They were leaded and troughs, metal. We were just going to put the PVC ones up there to do the job. And we spent some money, they said, no, we can't do that because of this, and we spent money to put the original type up there. They got damaged, and I see now we got the PVC ones up there.
Charles, who was there?
I'm talking about the board directors and the people of the museum, the officers of the museum that were. They never do the best they could at the time, but that's just, some people had different opinions of things, and just the way it worked out. So, on Main Street, you probably have the same.
Shouldn't we make some reference to the historically easily excitable neighbors? Which I know has been an issue down there. You know, remember the smokestack, and what the design was going to be, and that dragged out the brother. Whatever.
Well, I'm hearing two different things, well, two, two different things. So, I don't, I mean, we don't have to decide this tonight, there's no deadline, unless you all want to discuss it more. I understand what that, that's trying to say, is that basically, they're saying, we don't want a big glass, modern architecture, split level, underground garage, Frank Lloyd Wright House on Main Street. And so, it's just trying to say it's going to keep, keep it.
Probably there's no we, no enforcement mechanism.
Well, there's a lot, many enforcement mechanisms for many of our laws that we have.
That's never stopped anyone.
And not, not, and if it was enforced, it would not be very popular, some of the things.
I don't think you can build any of those homes in Reedville, like are there now, the tall building, there are too many stories. I think the fire code or something, you can't have two-story homes, or something like that.
There's a height limit, but Mr. Martian, of course, would be better versed than that.
I feel it's got a lot of trouble, right? I feel it's just got a lot of trouble.
But they did something about that, a few years of that.
So, what we would like to do, we would like to add, we'd like to add in this paragraph that historic district has no local authority, and the only state rules apply to the historic structures. Or is that something we want to leave out, or do we want to think about it?
I think we better think about it.
Okay. I'm sure you've got more.
One more. Page forty-one.
Okay.
The reservoir overlay district. And so, I have not read ahead of chapter five, because the reservoir stuff is all about. Question is, has any of this been done?
No.
So, we should just come out?
Well, I mean, these points are to be recognized. This is actually, you're talking about one, two, three, four. When someone comes with a building permit, we do not look at, bring out the reservoir layer and look to see if that's in the footprint of the reservoir. That being said, most of the reservoirs have steep slopes and swamps at the bottom of them. So, they're not really places that people are going to want to build, because they're gullies. And if you would like to look at the reservoir map, we can, we can do that.
Well, but key point here, do we have something called a reservoir overlay district?
Not, no, not, not, no, not a zoning district, just like we do not have a highway corridor overlay district, even though it's mentioned.
Okay, yeah, so, what, you got this, all of this one through five stuff here, but it says from point of view landing by the county should limit control development by establishing, so we can't control or limit anything, because we haven't done this. Why haven't we done this?
Because we're not sure reservoirs are the way to go.
Okay.
So, these are five important points that need to be recognized. We're throwing them out there. These are the issues that we're going to have to deal with. Now, if you'd like to take out the sentence that we established a reservoir overlay district, then we should take out, we should take out the highway corridor overlay district, too, because I don't think we're going to do that either.
I think we should, because it creates a false expectation that there's an enforcement mechanism for those five points above, doesn't exist. So, if those five things are important, they're all relatively useful context, but if, this one gives the impression that if somebody they go to, somebody who wants to do something, goes to and say, hey, let's do this, there isn't.
If that's the, if that's what the planning commission would like to do, I'll be glad to delete that sentence.
You all get what I'm getting at here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not either for or against, whatever y'all would like to do.
One of the reasons to point out that this document was originally generated, I think, nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah, you said that. So, it's out of date. So, let's clean it up.
No, no, what I'm saying is, it contains a lot of things that appear to be wishful thinking. That would be one.
Agreed.
And I'd just soon get rid of it if it had no...
Well, the land is still there, right?
I'm just not sure those are appropriate places to put reservoirs.
Right, and the reason why they're not appropriate places to put reservoirs is because we've contaminated the area, right?
Well, not necessarily, and it's that you don't want to put reservoirs on existing wetlands.
Right, but...
No, we took Mill Creek out, because it's, because Mr. Fisher told us there was a dump on it. So, Mill Creek Reservoir is sort of a, it used to be, there used to be three, four reservoirs listed down here. And before the last review of the comp plan, they took out Mill Creek, because, I don't know if you recall, but we talked about, I came in at the very end of the last comp plan, I was hired, and Mr. Fisher was, there's all kind of nasty stuff, you do not want a reservoir in that footprint in that area. So, that was taken out. But if the commission wants us to take out the reservoir overlay district, that is an end goal, but if these aren't the right places to put reservoirs in it, why are you going to curtail development in them? And they're not really development, developmental, developable properties, because they got fifteen, twenty percent of slope.
Contaminated some of them. We have a map somewhere.
Yeah, I was going to get to that.
Of reservoirs.
Right.
Or the possibilities of reservoirs.
And this is done from a nineteen sixty-nine NEDCO engineering development. It was a comprehensive water and sewer plan for the entire Northern NEC. It predates the planning commission, district commissions. There were not even any planning district commissions at the time. So, and this predates the Clean Water Act as well. So... Let's get to where we can see something. Well, I think it might be in chapter one. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Chapter one, cover end of that.
I think it's in there. That's where all the maps are.
You remember when they first started, they made some of them dumps.
Yeah.
So, they are effectively not qualified.
Qualified.
Not done qualified. But if you take that out?
So, we took out the Mill Creek ones down here, and if you look at the location of these, none of them are near population centers, with the exception of perhaps this one for Calio. But there's nothing near Burgess that, maybe having to pump water from here all throughout the county. Even with desalinization, you have to pump water to the households, and that's the problem, is we're so decentralized. So, any type of water system is going to be cost prohibitive, whether it's desalinization or reservoir. So, package plants, or smaller community water systems, you know, I'm just not sure. If you look at, this is, this is woods, this is nobody, well, very few people live here. It's in the center of the county, and it, I mean, there may be good topographically for water, but as far as trying to get it to where the people live, of course, we got a fringe of people that live all along the shoreline. And, of course, we got the villages as well, and some subdivisions that are dense, but for the most part, you know, like, you know, Walnut Point Road, you go half a mile between houses. And I just don't know, I mean, I'm very happy we got electricity, and, you know, I've sent three emails to All Points Broadband, and I'm right on the edge of that grant area, and I've never gotten any response from them, other than automated response when I said, I would like to be in line for broadband. And so, you know, I'm not too happy with them, but, you know, broadband, electricity, and then get, so, the other thing that, you know, dawned on me the other day is that we don't have a water system. So, all of a sudden, we're going to start a water system from scratch and serve everybody in the county?
That's definitely possible.
I don't, I mean...
If we start going to reservoirs, I think we're already in trouble. Once the decision is made to do that.
Well, that goes back to Mr. Parker saying, we don't do anything until there's an emergency.
That's what's going to happen.
But I cannot see spending money, the county spending money on developing a water system while we still have groundwater available. Now, the way I see this progressing is that the western counties along ninety-five are going to have serious problems, and they may have to do reservoirs and things of that nature. That will increase the groundwater withdrawals in, in between us, and we'll probably get more saltwater intrusion. And then we'll have to do, like, after roads, we'll have to desalinate our groundwater. Versos most of, but I did read about a new desalinization technique that uses thermal, but low thermal energy, only heats it up to like a hundred and ten degrees Fahrenheit, and it's got a cool side and a warm side, and somehow, the salt comes out of the cool side, and anyway, it's not, it doesn't take as much energy, but it actually does desalinate the water. So, there's new technologies going out there. But I see us having smaller package plants, and I see private companies that already have water systems putting in desalinization units. That's my interpretation of the future, but very well could be wrong.
At some time, at some point, when we get serious about doing that, somebody will look up the cost of one of those systems. I know that cruise ships have, and they carry more than five thousand people, maybe ships all have it, too, but they have it, and so, it's feasible, I guess, at some point, to put a system in that would create the fresh water for everybody, you just got to pipe it to everybody, that's it.
Or do it in small neighborhood, you know.
Or individualized, yeah, I think that's right.
You concentrate it near dense populations, where there's...
Relatively speaking.
Right. But I, I agree that if we're not planning on doing a reservoir overlay district in the next five years, we should take it out. So, I, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
It's not realistic.
Well, it gives you the impression that somewhere else you've got to get approval, and it doesn't exist.
What I'm wondering, and I'll go back and read chapter three again, but Stuart, are there places, I think you mentioned, what was it, the, what was the other one?
Highway corridor overlay district. There was a big stink about that. We put it in the comprehensive plan. Lancaster, it was a regional planning initiative from VDOT through the planning district commissions to try to get the counties to recognize that we have two competing and, and conflicting issues here. We have local traffic, and then we, our roads, we have no interstate, so that's our long distance traffic. So, when you have local traffic turning off, going to the post office, it's going to interrupt those people going long distance. So, the corridor access limiting with turn lanes and trying to get multiple businesses to use one outlet, as opposed to having four different driveways, and then limiting the number per hundred feet is something that we should do to help make sure we can travel long distances on these highways without as much interruption of local traffic. In Lancaster County, there was a bunch of people, and three, that put don't tread on me flags out, and they never put it in the Lancaster comp plan. And we got it in the comp plan, but we've never gone to the point of creating an overlay district.
But the suggestion I wanted to make with respect to that one, and the reservoir one, if there are other things in there that have not been done and have no likelihood of coming to fruition, I don't have enough history.
Well, I, please point them out, I will bring them out, and I'll bring them, yeah, I'll bring them up.
Because you know what we're doing or not.
Yeah, I'll bring them up.
Okay, good.
I mean, it's wishful thinking, and it's, it's one of those things, like, it's in the, it's in the capital improvement plan, but it might not get funded. But I see your point as well, it leaves a false impression that we're just sitting here twiddling our thumbs, not doing anything. But there's a thing called political will, and I'm sure everybody knows about political will.
Yeah.
And I don't want to go against the political will. So, you know, you kind of got to know the personality of the county, and what's going to fly.
Well, let's at least raise the stuff that is not going to come to that, has not, will not.
I'm a hundred percent behind that. I understand that we should not make false promises. And so, I am under the... And so I am under the understanding that we will, uh, take out, um, the Calio reservoir plan, district overlay that we're not gonna do, and then get rid of the reservoir overlay district in, uh, in this section right here on page forty-one.
And the goal in Heathsville too, there was a reservoir goal.
Okay.
For the village of Heathsville.
Then one last question. Um, at the, at the beginning, I was reading, and trying to follow along closely, but it talks about open space, protected space and green space. And then I get to page seven and then it talks about protected land. Is that the same as protected space? Point being, is there a place where the phrases open space, protected space and green space are defined somewhere and that we can make sure we're using them consistently? Cause I, I was getting lost. What's a protected land when you get protected space?
All right, what's the first one?
Well, open space, protected space and green space. Is there a definition?
Well, I mean, I can tell you how I interpret that. Open space is.
But it's not defined in the plan.
I don't think we have a definition page.
I think we should, cause there's a lot of conversation at the beginning of chapter three, using those phrases.
Well, a farm, farm field is open space. It is not protected, but it's green.
Right, so let's say that.
I think of open space as productive farmland, that's my opinion. Green space, more of a vegetated, uh, natural vegetation. And then protected is a conservationist man.
I think that's a reference to the Bay Act. In terms of.
If we could cut paste out of the Bay Act and make reference to it in here, that would be great, because I was getting completely lost with all of these spaces and I'm sure that, I didn't know if we were dealing with legal term of reference here or just a human, you know, just a general understanding, this is what are open spaces and are green spaces and so.
So again, is.
I'm a city boy.
Okay. A lot of stuff to repeat it is wishful thinking. I, I found the reference to green spaces hysterically funny. Cause if you're in Northumberland County, it's pretty hard to find a place where you can't see green spaces. So, you know, what are they worried about? Um, I see these continuous references to the pastoral charac- pastoral or rural character of the county, as if there's some sort of value to be protected. I think very well maybe, but I don't want it to send a signal that we're anti-development. I don't know how you balance those two. But, um, you know, again, I think this was written a long time ago by people with a very different worldview than I believe is current.
That'd be the case, Patrick. Cause I, I agree with my, with your assumption, your, um, characterization of how it reads. Do we want it to say that? And if not, do you have specific, not tonight, but specific?
I do, but you guys don't want to hear it at nine fifteen, I'll tell you.
Right, nine, nine fifteen.
So maybe you can write something down and give it to, to Stuart.
I'll just bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Cause you actually go up through your laundry list. I'll go through mine.
Okay. Stuart, would you, would you just hold that and, um, and we'll pick it up at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, and so we'll table that for tonight.
I'll continue it.
Well, one of the things to remember is, um, just because the old does not necessarily mean we have to throw it out. We have to kind of balance stuff. We are, but at least I am, just simple country folk, let's just balance stuff and make sure because, uh, and see where it affects the Bay Act, because the Bay Act itself is gonna be, they got some new regulations coming down for the Bay Act. And I don't care what we decide, Bay Act is going to be the key and, uh, to stand. So, so Stuart, with that, could we go to a board supervisors' report?
Yes, sir. At the last board of supervisors, there was a request by Robert J.C., trustee owner, conditional use permit to construct a commercial fair and property. It's owned to R2 residential waterfront. The property is shown as tax map parcel forty-three dash one, one ninety-four, located at sixty, six nineteen train lane, otherwise known as J.C. Vineyards. That was tabled. The next public hearing was to consider a comment on the disposal of transfer of public property located at six nine five eight Northumberland Highway, Heathsville, designated as tax maps sixteen A, lot twenty-six A, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight A, twenty-nine thirty, also known as the former EBB bank building and parking area. Uh, the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors has a request to transfer such property to the Northumberland School Board. That was delayed because the board supervisors, I believe, I was explained, was told that they were not happy with parcel twenty-eight A, which is the area to the east of EBB where all the county employees park. And, um, so they, I think they're amending the motion and I'm not sure if they have to re-advertise taking that one parcel twenty-eight A out so that county employees will have a place to park.
Was there any mention of the school board assuming the cost of maintenance for that property?
I believe that's understood, but I do not know. I will check on that.
Yes, please, cause that was a big dispute when the board, when the school board first suggested this.
Well, if it's, I would think, I mean, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I would think if it's transferred in their ownership, it's their job to keep it up. But of course, they got a new roof and now they want to build it. But, uh, anyway, um.
Okay. We need to explicitly, I'd like to know explicitly, who bears the maintenance expense?
I've got it written down, sir. I will, I will give you a response the next meeting.
Thank you.
Um, and the third one is in order to consider amendments to the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four budget, the budget amendments for purpose of appropriate monies for grants, school division, sheriff's office, IT, treasurer auditing services, OPO, settlement funds, emergency services, building and zoning, and a sanitary district capital project. That was continued and they will be meeting, uh, then tomorrow here. And they have not adopted the budget yet. And they are, from what I understand, they're cutting.
Don't be meeting on a Friday?
That is what I've been told.
Okay.
Yeah, that I had heard her say.
Cause I was afraid we wouldn't have a meeting room and I said, are y'all meeting tonight? And they, no, it's tomorrow night. And I'm like, okay. So, um, yes, the, who knows what's gonna come out, but, uh, we'll see.
Well, keeps the teacher population down. They're not gonna come on a Friday night.
Well, it's a work session. I don't think it's a public hearing, is it?
I'm not sure how, how it works. Usually when you hold your first public hearing and everybody can speak, that if you table it or continue it, that, then that, that's it.
Oh, they didn't close it, they didn't close it.
Well, they had, they have opened it before on different projects. Uh, so I, I have no idea whether they're gonna let people speak or not. I probably will not be here.
I believe it's the, Northumberland is the last county in the state to approve a budget, so.
Another thing to be proud of.
We were trying to get it to the capital improvement plan to them in time.
I know.
And so at least we weren't the ones that held it up.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
That's right.
All right. Stuart, was that it for the board supervisors?
Yeah, I, I'd like to just mention that we never had a citizen comment period and I'm not sure if there's anybody online or not.
No, okay.
But we should, Mike wanted to try to do that.
Is there anyone on the, in the virtual world that would like to have something to say to the Northumberland County Planning Commission tonight?
Anybody online, Carl?
We have one that would like to speak.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, this is Kim Johnson. And there was, uh, I just want to tell you, I do appreciate the time and effort y'all go through on these discussions. It's been interesting listening and, um, I applaud y'all for your effort and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, would there be anyone else? In the virtual world, would there be anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close public comments. Anything else, Stuart?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
So may, so move.
You are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, well, you're first and he's second.
I act a little bit.
Okay.